And I call the meeting to order. Pursuant to the open public meetings, ask public notice of this meeting has been given by the Board Secretary in the following manner. Posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the Voorhees Township Public Schools Administrative Building on July 26, 2021, August 24, 2021, and December 3, 2021. Sending written notice to the Courier Post on July 26, 2021, August 24, 2021, and December 3, 2021. Filing written notice with the Clerk of Voorhees Township on July 26, 2021, August 24, 2021, and December 3, 2021. Posting on the Voorhees Township website on July 26, 2021, August 24, 2021, and December 3, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good afternoon or evening. I can't even tell what time of day it is anymore. Thank you all for being here. It's nice to finally see you. A decent crowd. I'm happy to see all the support for the many interesting things that are on the agenda for today's discussion. But before we get started, I will actually have a roll call and then I'm going to ask Ms. Van Aken to give an update on the superintendent search. Mr. Bryce? Mrs. Casonza? Ms. Galliano? Dr. Levy? Mr. Schmuss? Mrs. Stupler? Mrs. Van Aken?
Here.
Mrs. Watson?
Here. Ms. Van Aken? Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Watson. Because our goal is to keep the community up to date on the superintendent search, I'd like to spend a few minutes letting you know where we are in the process. This search has taken place over a five-month period, beginning with a planning meeting on October 6, 2021, and concluding with the conditional selection of a final candidate on January 29, 2022. This election was followed by a third-party background investigation and contract negotiations this month. Tonight, we will vote on the contract being sent to the Camden County Executive for review and approval. At each board member during this process, an update has been provided as to the status and progress of the search, and status updates are also provided on the district website. After the election, the one non-incumbent member elected to the board was brought up to date to fully participate in the process. We chose HYA as a partner due in part by their methodical, data-driven, and inclusive approach to their search process. And as you all may remember, the first phase of the search was the engagement phase. The engagement phase consisted of designing and planning a process of engaging the board and all stakeholders through interviews, online surveys, and focus groups. We appreciate that HYA offered several interview times and multiple focus groups to accommodate residents' schedules. The information gathered from these interactions assisted the board in developing a leadership profile and selection criterion that matched the priorities of our community and that meet the unique needs of the students who are served through the Voorhees Township Public Schools. This disciplined, inclusive, and research-based approach ensured that all stakeholders have an opportunity to be a part of the search process and provided valuable feedback about the school district that assisted the search firm in better understanding our district in the broader marketplace. Approximately 125 community residents participated in interviews, online surveys, and focus groups, and 502 community surveys were completed. Having HYA's thoughtful gathering of this input was extremely important to the board, and all input was included before the board adopted the desired characteristics standard. The board believes that this extensive involvement of the community and staff in the leadership profile and desired characteristics ensured that the candidate's selection was representative of the community and the best fit for the district and the township. There were 62 potential candidates that started the application process, of which 44 had continued the process, completed the process, excuse me. Applicants represented eight different states across the country. The search firm vetted and presented 11 potential candidates, and after a review of all candidates, the board considered 13 applicants. The interviews took place over two eight-hour Saturdays, in which each board member shared thoughts, held healthy debates, and collaborated. It was long, but rewarding. I want to thank the community for participating during the engagement phase. It was an imperative part of the process. I also would like to thank HYA for their partnership during what might be one of the most important decisions we made.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just wanted to let the public know that we will be going into a relatively brief executive session. We have a personnel matter that we need to discuss, but we are also going to be discussing the board vacancy process. And when we return, we will explain the process to the public and move forward with the interview process. We don't expect to be long. I'm not going to put a specific timeframe on that, but I don't imagine we're definitely not going to be more than 30 minutes, but I don't even think it'll be that long. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Moved.
I'm opening up for voting. Okay. Okay. It's unanimous. Yes, we'll go into executive. It's open for online voting. Come back into open session. Anonymous to go back into open session. And I apologize, but we are going to go slightly out of order very briefly to do a slight agenda item adjustment. We're going to move to the superintendent report for one item for the former board member recognition, so that some of our attendees can.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Yes, tonight, we want to recognize two former board members for their service to the community, to our students, and to our staff. First, we have Mrs. Dawn Wallace, who was elected in 2017 until January of 2020, where she served as both the board president and on several different committees. Mrs. Wallace was instrumental in bringing full-day kindergarten to our district. So we would like to thank Mrs. Wallace. And second, we have Dr. Scott Falk. Scott was appointed on the board in September 2020 as a replacement for Mrs. Dunn Levy. Dr. Falk also served on several different committees, and he was certainly, over the past year, my go-to guy on the pandemic and any advice that I needed. So, Dr. Falk, we'd like to thank you.
Board would like to congratulate and thank Mrs. Wallace and Dr. Falk for their service and for serving our community. Thank you so much. Couple of announcements, and I apologize that I will have to use my notes. A couple of things. So, we did during executive session deliberate on the process, and I will say that under historically, we have conducted these interviews in executive session, mainly because it was at the request of the candidates and for the comfort of the candidates. But we appreciate that the interviews can be stressful and unnerving, and we were attempting to alleviate some of that unnecessary pressure. That said, we do recognize that there is a public interest in these interviews and how and why the board will select their preferred candidates. I will ask, however, that the public remember that these individuals have all volunteered to serve our community. Please be respectful. I've been personally disgusted by the tenor, tone, and inappropriate comments I've witnessed recently directed at the board and me personally on social media. While healthy debate and discussion on all topics is always welcome, recent comments have been personal attacks and attempts to, quote, "vilify" board members, and that will not be tolerated. We live together. We educate our children together. We mourn and celebrate together. I appreciate that we are all passionate about a lot of topics, but do not allow your passion to cloud your judgment. There is a way to have healthy discourse, even on topics as controversial as masks, curriculum, and race. It is our ability to engage in that healthy discourse that enables the board to make the best decisions. But if we continue to be victimized and harassed, the dialogue will shut down. Please be kind and respectful to all of these candidates. Remain silent throughout the entire interview process. The community does not get to actively participate in the interviews, the deliberations, or the decisions themselves. You will have an opportunity, however, during public comment to make any statements you so wish. We will have five minutes to hear a statement from each board candidate. Then we will have a 10-minute question section. We have designated four board members to ask questions. Everybody will receive the same questions, and all four candidates will be taken off, sequestered into another room, so that nobody is disadvantaged and heard the questions earlier than the other candidates. At this time, I'm going to ask all four candidates, except for the first one, which is Ms. Desai, to remain in the room. So, Ms. Adele, Dr. Falk, and Mr. Simpkin can be Tricia, if you will take them down to the other room. And Ms. Desai, I invite you to the -- are we going to do it at the podium? I apologize, but I will be setting a timer.
Before we begin, can we make sure that the candidate has the speaker on the podium? Thank you.
Marissa, how's that? Does that sound good?
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
So just again, you'll have five minutes to do your presentation, and then there will be four questions asked. You'll have about two minutes to answer each question. I'll advise you to answer each question, because we want to hear your answers to each of the four questions. So please make sure that you stay on task for two minutes, about two minutes each question. I will let you know when the two minutes is up. Okay. And you ready? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Maggie Desai. I live in the Hermitage section of Voorhees. I have two young daughters in Signal Hill, second and fifth grade. I am here today to be considered for the open board seat. I think I can bring a new perspective, a new voice to the board. I think I represent a very large and growing community. Having two young children in the district definitely helps keep the pulse of the day-to-day happenings, which I think is also very beneficial for the board. I think the last couple of years have been very trying for everybody, including students, teachers, parents. My hope is to, if I was to be elected to the board, you know, bridge some of those gaps, have a middle voice, and just, you know, be able to hear all sides of any situation. If you have a background in education, I used to teach elementary school. I currently teach at the college level. My work background, while colorful, is very diverse, but I do think that helps and lends to me being able to adapt to work with and talk to different types of personalities, needs, and wants, which I do think will be beneficial for the board as well. I will leave it at, you know, I do think the perspective that I can bring to the board will be different and fresh, and I would love to be considered.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schmuss?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Desai, for being here tonight. My question to you is, as a board member, what is your position on the use of social media if you were to become a board member?
My personal use of social? To be honest, I don't use social media very much as it is, so it's not something that I would look, I wouldn't use it as a platform. If it was something that was necessary, that was going to benefit the district or the board or the children, certainly I would participate in it, but I don't believe in using social media as a platform for anything, especially discourse about any serious topics.
Mrs. Stupler?
Sure, I had considered it. At the time, my schedule did not allow for me to even think about, you know, just the running, the campaigning. I've had a significant schedule change since then, and this opportunity presented itself, so I just thought it was a good time to give it a try.
Mr. Bryce?
Thank you again for joining us. Wanted to know, what do you think the role of public education includes?
I think the role of public education is just awareness for our students, especially our younger students. Of course, academically, you know, they need to be brought up to speed, especially right now with what's happened in the last couple of years, but there's definitely a social aspect of public schools that is very important, and it's, I know we as a district, we focus a lot on anti-bullying, which is very important. I think there's another aspect, another component to that, which is awareness and understanding of differences, and not just the basic differences that we've been used to, but, you know, now you look deeper, especially after the last couple of years, children that have suffered, you know, mental illness, behavior issues, you know, we have a growing LGBTQ community that needs attention. So I think, of course, academics are very important, and I think as a district, we've always done a good job academically, but there is a social aspect that needs to be incorporated into that as well.
Dr. Levy?
Thank you for joining us this evening and especially for putting yourself out there publicly to interview for this position. Could you please describe your position on DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, including race and gender identities specifically?
Yes, of course. I actually do think DEI is very important. It needs to be discussed much deeper, and I actually think it also needs to be discussed and brought to attention probably at a much younger age than we even talk about now. I think it's something that's growing bigger and bigger, and I think our children at a very young age need to be much more aware of what these differences are. Again, as I was saying before, having them aware only helps them to understand and accept these situations from an early age.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate your time and your participation in this process.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Danielle, if you could get the next candidate. Mrs. Adele, thank you. Mrs. Adele? I just want to remind you, you'll have five minutes to make your presentation, and then we have four designated questions for you. We've estimated that it should take about two minutes per question. If you want to make sure that you get through each question in the designated 10-minute timeframe. And I will be keeping time, and I will let you know to the extent that you're not keeping track. But aside from that, let me know when you are ready.
Okay, before I do anything, do you need me to sign in here or just go? Okay. All right. Thank you. Steve, board members, and interim superintendent Michael Redfern and community. I'm submitting my name, as you know, for Board of Education as for replacement for Mrs. Dawn Wallace. So I'm sure you all recall, it was the November candidate who came within 16 votes of being elected to the seat held by Mrs. Van Aken, who received 3,493 votes at 18.63%, to my 3,477 votes at 18.54% of the total votes. Since Mrs. Wallace's resignation occurred within 90 days of this election, it seems like the most fair and democratic way to fill this position with a person who best represents the voice and will of the Voorhees community. Further, by doing so, the board will demonstrate they will not allow personal politics to interfere with supporting the candidate. The Voorhees voters felt best advocated for the parents, children, and teachers of our school district. As some of you may know, I am a 21-year resident of Voorhees, residing with my husband of 20 years, along with my 12-year-old daughter Erin, who is here with me tonight, and she is a seventh grader at BMS, and my 10-year-old Kira, who is a fifth grader at Preston Elementary. I'm a licensed social worker, having attained my masters at Rutgers University in Camden, along with a Bachelor of Science in Psychology from Drexel University in Philadelphia. I belong to National Association of Social Workers and have over 17 years clinical experience providing psychotherapeutic, which is individual, group, and family therapy, case management and discharge planning services in various mental health and substance abuse settings. I worked with children, adolescents, and adults of diverse backgrounds in all levels of care with special needs inmates at a men's mean security correction facility, which demonstrates my commitment to assisting in the well-being and success of others. I've dealt with everything from suicide attempts and self-harm behavior, eating disorders, identity issues with everything from suicide attempts and self-harm behavior, sexual assault, substance abuse, addiction issues, behavioral problems, and medication refusal. Additionally, I worked as a case manager for behavioral health insurer, completing pre-serts for mental health and substance abuse treatment, utilizing medical necessity criteria and best practice guidelines, demonstrating my knowledge and commitment to evidence-based treatment. In July 2020, I had the pleasure of working on the Road Back to School Plan Committee with our previous superintendent, Dr. David Gentile, in an effort to get our children back in-person learning in the least restrictive and safest environment possible. I'm pursuing a position on the board to be a voice for the parents, children, and teachers of this community. I believe the primary role of education is to ensure our children provide it with an honest vision of what it means to be an engaged citizen of this wonderfully diverse country and community. In order to achieve that, our educators must promote values and teach the skills of thinking, leadership, and teamwork so that they can become independent thinkers who are able to problem-solve on their own and promote liberty of thought, speech, and religion. The focus of education should not be on what is culturally or politically relevant at the time, but on the basic skills of math, science, English, and history, the good and the bad, in order for them to be successful and independent adults striving for a better future than our own. When parents send their children to school, they do so with the belief their rights as parents not end with their children walk through the school door, that their morals, values, and beliefs that they instill in their children are being valued and respected. It's been a difficult time for parents and their children, as well as our teachers, throughout the COVID pandemic, having to navigate uncharted territory. I witnessed the negative impact school closures have had on our children, especially those identified as special needs. Children are falling behind academically, as many parents are unable to work from home or take time off to assist their children in navigating the challenges of virtual learning. They were isolated from their friends at a time when social interaction is important in their social and cognitive development, resulting in depression and anxiety-related disorders. We have witnessed government mandates put into effect that were not based on science, rather on politics. These mandates encroached upon parental and student rights, implementing questionable policies over very valid objections from many parents. Policies were enacted not based on science, rather based on fear. As such, it's my intention to be an advocate for parental choice, parental rights, academic excellence, physical responsibility, transparency, and accountability, especially if pertains to personnel issues and future curriculum changes in order to maintain learning consistency, prevent bureaucratic overreach, prevent any future closures and eruptions, flexibility for local school districts, early childhood learning and education, after-school programs, and expanded learning, especially for special needs at-risk children. As a parent with two children who have medical issues, I am aware that nobody knows my children and their needs better than I do, just as nobody knows your children better than you do. I had learned this through my interactions with our doctors, teachers, extended family, and people in this community. That is why I feel it's important to ensure that parents have the final say in their children's medical and educational needs. I expect that when I speak about my children, staff will listen and know what I know best. As a member of the school board, I would fully intend to listen to the parents of this community. Thank you.
Ms. Adele, thank you for coming. My question to you is, as a board member, what is your position on the use of social media? If you were to become a board member, what would your position be on the use of social?
Well, I would need to follow the guidelines and policies of the board.
Mrs. Stupler?
Yes, I had one in the general election, as you know, came within 16 votes. Thank you.
Mr. Bryce?
My question to you is, what do you think the role of public education includes?
Role of public education, what it includes?
What do you think the role of public education includes?
Well, it includes many things. It includes, you know, our belief in terms of following our math, science, education, in terms of our history, involving parental. I think parents should have a right to include what they feel should be followed in the guidelines, not excluding them from participating in not excluding them from participating in that and their children's educational needs. I think we need to keep an open mind in terms of following also medical necessity and policy guidelines for ensuring our children get the best education that comes in our community. I think we've done that. I think Voorhees is an awesome community, which is why I came here. I think we're doing an awesome job at educating our kids in this community. I have never had any real doubts about the education my children are getting. My only concern is making sure that parent rights are followed. This has been a challenging time with COVID. I witnessed, unfortunately, some kids who have fallen behind. As a result, their parents not being able to be home to work with their kids. And that has been my main concern and was a big reason for me to pursue a position on the board. I've had some kids in my own community, I took them in my home during COVID, assisted them in terms of what their educational needs, especially some kids who English or their second language, or parents weren't able to assist them. They had no idea how to, you know, navigate with them in terms of the internet was down. So I think it takes a community to help our kids in terms of helping them with their public education. Sure.
Dr. Levy?
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. I know this process can be a little bit nerve-wracking. My question for you is, can you please describe your position on DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, including race and gender identities specifically?
Well, in terms of that issue, my concern is making sure that parents have a right in terms of policy 5756. My concern with that is parents not having the right to consent, or it's a knowledge of children being able to just change their identity or their name. And I'm concerned about that. I think kids who are going through puberty, going through a change in adolescence, need their parents' guidance. As I'm sure many of you know, we use our family values, our religion, our our culture in helping us to navigate those issues. It's not fair for our children who can't even, who don't even have a driver's license. They can't even get a driver's license at 16, but yet we're giving them the right to be able to change their gender and their name without parental consent. I have a problem with that, especially as a clinician. When I work with my, with parents and with children, is to ensure that we are able to work together in helping our children navigate that and sure parents have, are together in helping their children navigate those difficult times in adolescence. So that's where I stand on that issue, making sure that parents are involved in that process.
Thanks so much for your answer.
Mrs. Adele, thank you so much for your time and for being a candidate for this vacancy. We appreciate it.
Is that it? All right. Thank you. I appreciate you. Danielle, if you could get Dr. Falk, please. Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Falk. I just want to remind you that you'll have five minutes to make a brief speech, and then we will have four individuals designated on the board to ask questions. We are estimating about two minutes per question. We're going to give you 10 minutes for that entire question section. I will keep you on time to the extent you go off time. But let me know when you are ready, and we will start the talk.
All right. Well, I am ready.
Great. Thank you.
So, Mr. Redford and board members, thank you for honoring me and allowing me to come back and apply for this position. It's, you know, it was a tremendous honor to serve on the board before, and I learned a tremendous amount and hope that I was at least somewhat helpful as we went through the struggles of the last couple of years. The, you know, when I saw this position come open, I really, I didn't take it lightly. I thought hard about whether or not I wanted to come back onto the board. And I struggled with it and for a number of reasons. But what it came down to is that I really wanted to serve the community and make sure the children of the community had the the best opportunities to succeed in the future. It's quite the bug that's flying around there. So that was more important to me than anything that was holding me back from applying again. The, you know, I think that, you know, some of the skills that I lend can be useful to the board. I, you know, work a lot with the educational community and and think that the values that I bring are important for our community and also for the success of our students in the future. I am, I'm really excited about having, you know, our new superintendent start. I'm not sure who it is, but I think that there's always opportunity whenever you have a new leadership team. And I look forward to, if I get to, to work with them to help guide the district into the future and make sure that our children have the best opportunity for success. I want to spend just a couple of seconds talking about the things that I value in leadership. So I think data-driven leadership is really important. Making sure that we're making decisions based on data rather than emotions is sort of my MO. At work, I think that that was my MO when I was on the board before. So ensuring that we're making the right decisions, again, that are going to lead to a successful future and lead to all of the outcomes that we want for our children, which I think is to give them the opportunity to be the best that they can be and to be as successful as they can be when they graduate. So I know that that was brief, but, you know, I've been told before that brevity is the soul of wit, so.
Dr. Falk, good to see you again.
It's nice to see you too.
Thanks for coming. So my question to you is, as a board member, what is your position on the use of social media?
It's really interesting because I tend to only use social media professionally. So the only social media that I'm actively engaged with is LinkedIn, which is a professional account. You know, I definitely work professionally with others on that. You know, we exchange what I think is purely professional information about new findings in science and medicine. But I tend to stay out of other types of social media. I think that it's more of a distraction than it's worth. I did create an Instagram account because my son told me I had to, so I could see so I could see a live video that he was doing one time. So I logged on and saw his live video. I have exactly, I think, one friend on Instagram, which is my son. I do have a Facebook account, which I haven't logged on to since, I think, it's 2012 or so. So again, I think that, you know, our role as board members is to be able to communicate effectively with our public. And I know that social media can be one way to do that, but I also think that there's there's a lot that goes on in social media that can be very distracting and can be very emotionally roiling. So I'd rather not let that distract me and do things in a thoughtful and and data-driven way rather than being sucked into the emotional aspects of social media.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Stupler?
It's a good question. So I didn't get my paperwork in on time. That's really it. So, yeah, I just, I got distracted. It was a really busy springtime. And I just didn't get my paperwork in on time. What? Yeah.
Mr. Bryce?
What do you think the role of public education includes?
So I think, when I think about what our obligation is to our children, it's to teach them how to think on their own, to be successful on their own. So we need to give them the tools to be able to analyze the world around them, to be able to integrate with the world around them, to be able to be thoughtful about the world around them, and to be able to work with those around them in a team-based way to be successful in their life. And I think that it's evolving. So public education, you know, it's changed from the days of rote memorization, where we're saying, this is the curriculum, and these are all the facts that you have to know, to a standard where it's, this is how you need to think about things, and this is how we'd like you to think about things, to analyze the problems on your own. So you're able to make these own decisions because you're going to be an independent adult, you know, sooner than a lot of us would hope. And I can say that having a teenager, that it's important for people to, for our children to learn how to make those decisions and how to think on their own and how to analyze and be really thoughtful citizens by themselves. You're welcome.
Dr. Levy?
Thanks for joining us this evening, Dr. Falk. I know these interviews can be a little nerve-wracking, so we appreciate you putting yourself out there. My question for you is, can you please describe your position on DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, including race and gender identities specifically?
Yeah. So I think being inclusive is incredibly important, making sure that all of our students feel like they're included so they can have the opportunity to have a tremendous education. I think when we have exclusive policies, policies where people don't feel comfortable, they're not going to learn everything that they need to, and they're not going to have the best opportunities for success that they need to. It's also important for us, I think, to recognize that, you know, our society is evolving as a whole. And having an inclusive society where everybody is strongly represented is really important to have different voices at the table and make sure that voices that weren't at the table previously now have an opportunity to be at that table, to have their voice heard, and to become parts of our leadership.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your candidacy for the vacancy. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. My excuse?
Yeah.
Danielle, if you could bring Mr. Simpkin, please.
Mr. Simpkin, you will have five minutes to provide a brief statement to the board. And then we have four individuals or designated individuals on behalf of the board that will have questions for you. We're estimating about two minutes per question, so a total of 10 minutes for the question period. I will be keeping track of time to the extent that you go off track. But that is about the extent of it. So do you have any questions about the procedure?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Great. All right. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready. Start it up. And you shall teach diligently to thy children, speak with them, sit with them. To me, that means values. Thank you to the residents of Voorhees Township, Board of Education members, administrators, staff, and guests for being here to hear why the applicants who aspire to fill the current board vacancy should receive the nomination. It definitely has come abundantly clear to me that there is quite a gap between the views of what should be happening in our schools and what's happening amongst the community. And, you know, it's not meant to be that way, but it's gotten that way. So we'd like to try and fix it. But according to New Jersey Title 18A 12-24.1, the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, I understand how a school board is to operate. The responsibilities of a school board member are confined to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. It also states that policies are to be framed, policies and plans to institute those policies only after the board has consulted with those who will be affected by them. And in the case of most policies relevant to running the schools, those who are affected by them are the members of the public. And therefore, in my opinion, the board should make every effort possible to include members of the public in decisions. And I just don't see how that's happening quite often in our township. So let me explain why I'm here today, seeking the appointment of the board. Just a little about me. Both of my parents are retired public education administrators. I grew up hearing all the stories one could imagine about the daily occurrences in the school district. I learned to greatly respect our school system. I learned how a school district should be run in the views of my family. And I learned that my parents were accountable to the students in the community to ensure each child receives the highest level of education possible and that each child deserves. So I was looking over, you know, some of the things on New Jersey School Board Association websites, which seemed like interesting questions to be answered, aside from those ones that you have tonight. Some of those were, why do you want to serve on the school board? My answer is, I feel I can bring a different viewpoint on most debatable topics. I'm well-read and informed on both historical and current events. I can provide factual information to the board so that when decisions are made, at least there will be another source of facts rather than a potentially lopsided source. Next question I saw was, do you understand the time commitment? I mean, I think everyone knows that on the board, I've spent a lot of hours independently researching and making the public aware of my findings. I am certain that time far exceeds any time requirement my board membership would entail, but I would still complete my own due diligence on the issues as well. And the last question was, what perspectives will you bring to the table? And as I mentioned, my perspectives are based on factual information that I find while doing my research. I understand that individuals or groups of individuals can have opposing view. There may be large gaps in ideology, but I'm committed to shortening those gaps by effectively communicating views and facts with the public and fellow board members.
My question to you is, as a board member, what is your position on the use of social media?
Well, that's a great question. The simple answer is, my view on it is to follow the written policy that exists. I think it's an excellent policy. One should not engage with the public about board business or school business, and if that happens, you refer to the board president. You should not express your personal views, although you're allowed to, just not on behalf of the school system or the school board. I think that would clarify exactly how I feel about the social media policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a great question also. I really considered it, and I didn't feel that at the time that I had enough viable or factual information about the goings-on in Voorhees Township to be able to properly serve. However, I've been endeavoring and understanding that, and I feel that at this point in time and in the future, I'll continue to be able to be abreast of the situations that are affecting our community.
Bryce?
The role of public education.
I'm going to answer that, I guess, for just one moment, because, you know, those definitions of what kind of the whole consensus of the public feels those roles are have changed dramatically over decades, really, nothing recent. But I believe that the role of the public schools is to give what's guaranteed to every student in any is to give what's guaranteed to every student in any district, and that is an education, actually, free education. I know it's not really free, because we're paying taxes, but every student is entitled to an equal, actually, opportunity to enjoy the best education that any district can give those students. It's preparing for life. I understand that nowadays, it's preparing for entering society. My concerns are what part of society, who's deciding what society is doing and what's acceptable to enter that society. And I feel that, um, that's where I feel the public schools and this district could, could, could gain a better sense of that with more public interaction. Thank you.
Thanks so much for joining us this evening. I know this process is a little nerve-wracking, so I appreciate you putting yourself up there. Um, my question for you is, if you could please describe your position on DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, including race and gender identities specifically?
Well, I definitely understand that everybody is diverse with the members that reside within it, and I believe in accepting every member of the community, um, regardless of race, age, sex, sexual orientation, gender. Uh, if I missed anything, I apologize, because I wasn't prepared to, to read the exact list. But, uh, I do believe that inclusivity also needs to occur, so that we're not excluding people. I just fear that sometimes inclusion in smaller groups affects the greater group of young citizens and old, like, adults as well. Um, so what I don't like seeing is inclusion that starts to exclude others. Um, but if we can all, you know, find ways to, to, to encompass all those areas, I think it's phenomenal. And lastly, with equity, I would answer that by clarifying my views on what it means. I believe that equality actually refers to opportunity, and in some cases, not all, of course, equity has been, it's, I'm sensing that it's starting to feel like it's, uh, it's almost like a, an outcome situation, where you really can't control all the outcomes. Um, and I understand how the school system defines equity, and I, and I, I don't fully agree or disagree with all of it. I could say that, uh, where I stand on it is, I understand it's a part, part of our education system, and I would just like to make sure that everyone receives what they're entitled to, which is the best possible education that a school district gives.
Thanks so much for your answer.
Thank you for being here, um, this evening, Mr. Simpkin, and for being a candidate for this vacancy.
Thank you for having me.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Danielle, just want to go and bring everybody back.
Perfect. You can, um, you can stay in here. So thank you again to everyone for participating, uh, for putting your names in the hat for the vacancy position. Um, it's wonderful to see so many people volunteering their time and energy. I know this takes a, a lot of effort, so we greatly appreciate everyone, um, everyone taking the time. Um, now, we will open it up for board vacancy nominations and discussion.
Uh, President, I'd like to nominate Dr. Scott Falk.
I would like to nominate, uh, Dr. Dejai.
Any other nominations?
I have a motion to close the nominations.
A motion to close the nominations?
And we, we vote in the order of the nominations, so we will be voting on Dr. Scott Falk at this time. Should I open the voting right now? Yeah, okay. So this vote is to vote on the first nomination of Dr. Scott Falk, and then if, if that's not a majority, we move to the next one. All right, I'll open the voting. I'm sorry. Okay, I will read off the votes. Mr. Bryce, yes. Mrs. Cosenza, yes. Ms. Galliano, no. Dr. Levy, yes. Mr. Schmooze, yes. Mrs. Stupler, no. Mrs. Van Aken, yes. Mrs. Watson, yes. So it's a vote of six to two for Dr. Falk. So Dr. Falk wins the nomination.
Congratulations. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2022 meeting, as shown on the attachment for the regular meeting on executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Voting is open? Voting is unanimously yes. I'm closing the voting.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the January 24th, 2022 meeting, as shown in the attachment for the regular meeting and executive session?
Voting is open? I have seven yeses and one abstention by Ms. Galliano. Closing the voting.
I have motion to approve the minutes of the January 29th, 2022 meeting, as shown in the attachment, the regular meeting and the executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Online voting is open? The motion is unanimously passed. I'm closing the voting.
I get a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting on February 2nd, 2022, as shown on the attachment.
Second.
This is the first? Oh, thank you. Online voting is open? Motion unanimously passes. I'm closing the voting.
Under information items, you will see the bus evacuation drills, as shown in the attachments, suspensions, fire drills and safety drills, the HIB report, and the enrollment as of February 15, 2022. There are no items under communications, board secretary report.
Sure. Uh, there's many dates that we've listed on our agenda for our, for the budget timeline. Uh, some of them have been pushed back a little bit. Typically, by law, the governor makes the budget address on the last Tuesday of February, which would have been February 22nd, and then state aid figures are released on the 24th. Uh, both those dates have been pushed back to March 8th and March 10th. So we will get our state aid figures on March 10th. Um, the budget will be presented and voted upon for submission to the county on March 16th. Uh, originally, it was due at the county by the 21st of March. That's also been pushed back by the 28th. We're still shooting for submitting it on time, though. Um, then, the last day for county, for the county to approve the budget is April 20th. We'll place the ad in the paper, which is our advertised budget, uh, to advertise the budget and talk for the public hearing. That, that will be advertised approximately April 27th, and our public hearing and final budget adoption will be at our May 4th meeting. So that's the timeline. Uh, another thing to talk about is, right now, all administrators and board members have received their, um, personal relative financial disclosure statement, and that is due by the end of April. So if you did, you should have got an email with that. So if you can complete that, that would be great. If you have any questions, please reach out to Tricia Malady. These next two things are, are grant-funded, but we have this wellness grant through our state, through our school's health insurance fund, and, uh, it provides challenges for our staff. Uh, one is called the Tavi Challenge, one is Prasada, and it includes like walking challenges, exercise challenges. And again, it's all grant-funded. It, it just mostly prevents, uh, uh, not prevents, promotes wellness. And we have several winners that are listed. What happens is, when they reach certain milestones, their names get drawn, and they get a reward. They get like $25 or $50, something along those lines. So our winners of our Tavi Challenge are Lisa Bailey, Elaine Bans, Ashley Corcoran, Mary Ellen Fitzpatrick, Wendy Koenig, Joyce Lorella, Casey Stevens, Kimberly Stratton, and Russell Winsett. And then the Prasada, it was more of an online thing, and there's like yoga and different classes. And in October, we had winners, Vicky Hill and Trish Lancaster. In November, Eileen Adams and Vicky Hill. December, Trish Lancaster and Allison Frankolino. And in January, Eileen Adams and Melissa Rupp. So you can tell that some of these, uh, employees are very active and competitive, and we congratulate them and we thank them for their participation. Um, and we're grateful to our shift for the grants that we received in this area. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you to all of the, uh, to all of the winners. Superintendent, report?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. A couple of things, and I'll be brief. First, I want to, uh, congratulate all of our BMS winter sports. Uh, they all had winning seasons this year. Uh, and a special congratulations to our girls' basketball team. I had the opportunity to go watch them play in the championship game at Beck. Uh, and while they did not, you know, they did, they came out on the short end of, of the game, the girls played extremely hard, and they should be very proud of themselves for what they've done. Um, our BMS Drama Club is gearing up for their performance of Once on This Island. That will be March 11th, 12th, and 13th at the BMS Theater, and tickets are still available for all of those shows. I just wanted to clarify, uh, I've got some questions about snow days and delayed openings. Uh, I just want everybody to understand, we don't make that call alone. Uh, we do share buses with Eastern, so they'll, uh, pick up at Eastern, then they pick up at middle school, then they pick up at the elementary school. So we have to coordinate any delays, but delayed openings with Eastern High School. Um, so we coordinate that together. Uh, I know sometimes conditions seem like they're fine at nine o'clock, but they may not have been fine at seven o'clock when the high school starts. So we do coordinate that together. Uh, I have an agreement, we kind of have a little agreement with the sending districts and Eastern that if the weather's questionable, we all are up at four o'clock AM, and we come together and, you know, we're reading, watching the weather forecast and discussing what we should do. So we do coordinate, uh, that together, uh, just to clarify that. There is a new requirement, and some of you maybe have been getting an email, that whenever a school does a security drill, uh, the parents have to be contacted by the end of that day. Uh, that's for security drills. It does not include fire drills, our standard fire drills. So if you started to get these emails, um, it's just a new law that has gone into effect, so the parents know that these drills took place. So when your child comes home and says, we did a drill, uh, you'll know ahead of time, uh, that it was, that it did take place, and, and the school is aware of it. Uh, on February 10th, uh, 2022, Mrs. Haley, Dr. Young and I, we had our preliminary, uh, meeting with CUSAC, and that is the Quality Single Accountability Continuum. Uh, and every three years, every public school system in New Jersey has to be evaluated by the Department of Education. Uh, so we literally have uploaded tens of thousands of, of document, pages of documents to the Department of Ed, and they will go through them. It's everything from policy to procedures to curriculum to finances, operations. Uh, so that, that was the start of it. That was our first, uh, meeting with them. We got some positive comments on that, and then they will be coming through to take a tour of our buildings. They have not told us when that will take place, but they will take a physical, uh, tour of our facilities. On Friday, we'll be doing our mid-year budget review with the county, so they'll go over, we'll sit down, uh, Mrs. Haley and Dr. Young will sit down with the county, uh, and they will take a look at our budget since we're halfway through the school year, and, and we'll take a look at that. And finally, I designated February as Teachers' Pet Month. Uh, so what I did was, uh, each teacher at the different schools, they submitted a picture of their pet, and I had some teachers at each school, uh, who were the lead people in that. So I would like to thank, uh, Ally Farrell at Hamilton, Trish Salka at Signal Hill, Danielle, Danielle Rachel Osage, Jennifer Bransford at Crescent, Sue Donnelly did the administration building, Crystal Love, Melvin Do, and the BMS Student Council, uh, took care of the contest at that, at the BMS school. So the teachers submitted a, a picture of their pet. The students voted to see which pet would win at that school. So we have six. Each board member has a index card and a pen. So we're going to show you the six winning pets, um, and then we're going to ask you to vote, uh, put you on the spot and see which one is the winner. I'd like to say they will get a year's supply of dog or cat food, but that's not going to work when you see the pets. Okay, Mr. Taylor? Okay, contestant number one is Cash?
She's very cute.
Number two is Dexter?
Oh, my God.
We have Leo and Lola? And then we have Pickles?
Oh, man.
And Griz? And finally, Hudson? Okay, so there we go. We're members. You're, you're on the clock.
Is it Dash or Cash?
Cash.
Dash.
Uh, Dash, okay. Oh, yeah.
They just put, if you just put a number on your card, and then Ellen will be the keeper of the votes.
Did you say I'm the keeper of the votes?
Yeah.
Did you say I'm the keeper of the votes? Who told the vote? Who's telling them?
Yeah, they're going to vote on the card, and they don't have an animal.
I think, yeah, okay.
Then we'll put the winner up on our, our website and our Facebook page.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have, uh, for us.
Thank you very much. Um, Ms. Galliano, will you provide a policy committee report?
I think we skipped some. Oh, sorry, committee report. I'm sorry. I was looking.
Anna?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Will you do the policy committee report? Thanks.
Uh, the policy committee met this evening, and we discussed policies for, uh, first reading, and, uh...
Yes. Audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the board, please approach the podium and write your name and address on the login sheet. If you are attending via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to be acknowledged. While the board is limited in its ability to respond to the public on matters involving personnel, litigation, negotiations, and attorney-client privilege, the board will now hear comments from the public relating to items on the agenda for this board meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board will not take action this evening. You will be notified at some later time by letter, electronic... this evening. You will be notified at some later time by letter, electronic mail, telephone, or in the context of a later board meeting of any action the board does take. I see no comments. Okay. Going once. Good. Okay, board comments.
I'd like to thank Mr. Redfern for all of his work over the past, I don't know how long it's been, this point, months. We've had a number of new and creative activities for the students to vote on. Teacher morale has been, I think, impacted by your leadership. And I just want you to know, I appreciate the way that you've stepped in for the township, and that it, it doesn't go without notice. Really appreciate everything that you've done and, and continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
I second that. Yes. I think we all feel, we all feel that way. You have been instrumental. Any other board comments? Yes?
I also like to thank Ms. Forever. She has done a great job. When I asked her to join the end of a fourth party, he did come and showed support for the teachers. So I really appreciate that, and that really shows a lot of dedication and support. I guess basically the agenda tonight, I was under the impression that we were going to deliberate on the candidates, and my feeling was the vote should be based on the public, just like any other point we to report. And the only emails I got from the folks for one had it from our public. So I think choices should have been based more on the public, as we are serving the public in our role. So I just wanted to put that out there in my personal feeling. So I only got the one particular candidate.
Any other comments? There are no items under transportation policy. Can I get a motion to approve all of the items under policy?
So moved.
Online voting is open? Voting is unanimous. I'm closing the voting.
Can I get a motion to approve all of the items under personnel?
Move that.
Online voting is open? All votes are yes with a no, with a no by Ms. Galliano. Closing the voting and saving it.
No actions under deferred action. New business. Can I get a motion to approve all of the items under new business?
So moved.
A second.
Online voting is open? All votes are, all votes are in, and they're all yes. Voting is closing.
Our next regular meeting will be at 7:00 PM on March 16th, 2022, at the Administration Building. Audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the board, please approach the podium and write your name and address on the login sheet. If you are attending via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to be acknowledged. While the board is limited in its ability to respond to the public on matters involving personnel, litigation, negotiations, and attorney-client privilege, the board will now hear comments from the public. Comments are limited to three minutes. The board will not take action this evening. You will be notified at some later time by letter, electronic mail, telephone, or in the context of a later board meeting of any action the board does take. Don't start my timer. Okay, ready? Want to state your name first?
Michelle Nocia, address, if you want to come over, 38th and 3rd Drive.
Go ahead.
Come over, call my employer, whatever you want to do. I appreciate each candidate's willingness to be interviewed publicly. Honestly, I do. It's an easy position to be in, and it certainly will prepare you for the judgment that you're bound to face. Did you join the board now or join the board and the future? So not, as they'll probably all tell you, not climbing to navigate. Mrs. Stupler brought up an interesting point, which is what the public wants. So I just thought, you know, as a member of the public, it would be good for you to hear, at least from my vantage point, what the public wants. We had a candidate that stated that the board should base their decision on what the public supported in their vote in November. This is an interesting point. What does the public want? We saw this evening a diverse group of candidates and opinions. One of those candidates noted that parents should have the right to participate in their children's education. I believe they do. This opportunity exists through the elected members of our board, and attending public meetings. One of the candidates also stated that you should select them because they came within 16 votes. However, there were other candidates here this evening that were not on the ballot that perhaps the public would have voted for were they on the ballot. So that is an important point, I think, to remember. Another candidate stated something, we want to fix it, when referring to the views on the climate and public education. I'm not sure who the "we" is that he was referring to. However, the "we" that I know and interact with and have for years in this community supports and welcomes the mindfulness and emotional intelligence that Dr. Fock and Mrs. Zize displayed. The "we" in this community at large supports the current classroom experience, which is why we wanted our board members to return our children to the classroom. It's why we were so interested in the reopening plan and why we advocated full-day kindergarten. It's why we want our children in school, in the classrooms, with the teachers that we love so much. We're not afraid or opposed of what they're learning. We appreciate it and we support it. What I am learning through raising a teenager in this district is that oftentimes the educators see my child for who they are, rather than for who I want them to be or think they should be. This is demonstrated by my own teenager who still refers back to Mrs. Farrell at Hamilton and Mrs. Zilinski at BMS, who she tells me all the time, get her. So I just want to say that that's my opinion of what I think the community wants. So thank you.
Good evening. Julie Kedover, 9 Fairway Drive. I stand with other Voorhees residents who want our children not only to have a strong academic foundation, but to also be taught critical and independent thinking skills. I do not agree with parent choice, which is a euphemism for total parental control, in a system in which that is not only impractical and impossible, but also totally at odds with the objectives that system was designed to achieve. Indoctrination of children with their parents' views can be accomplished in homeschooling, not in public school. I'm a zealous advocate for my children and for your children, but parent control, as formulated in national discourse, does not work in public schools, and it is driving away many talented educators. Sometimes it sees, it seems as though people who espouse these views actually want public schools to fail. In public schools, children should learn how to, how to think for themselves. They should learn compassion for others and how to function in community. I support a well-rounded curriculum that ensures our youth grow up with the ability to develop their own views, a curriculum that celebrates diversity, teaches inclusion, and strives for equity and justice. I stand for the teaching of truthful history in an age-appropriate way, even when that means delving into hard topics like racism and Holocaust education. Open access to the books that explore these topics, and robust social and emotional learning that supports our kids to learn resilience and coping skills, and to be agents of their own well-being. Public education is under attack, and I want it to be clear that Parents United and their supporters do not speak for me, and they do not have the interest of my children or of the public schools more generally in mind. Thank you.
I see.
Hello, my, my name is Tricia Chadwick, and I live at 101 Blue Ridge Road in the Green Ridge section of Voorhees. And I stand in opposition to a growing and very vocal minority. I stand united with other residents of Voorhees in support of public education. To let you know that I trust our elected representatives to make appropriate and well-thought-out decisions with the best interest of all of our children. Thank you for volunteering your time to ensure our schools remain excellent. I trust teachers. I trust them to make professional judgments and exercise their extensive education and training to teach our youth age-appropriate content in all areas, including diversity, equity, and inclusion, social, emotional learning, and an accurate and factual history. And I just want to say I'm relieved and happy that your appointment appears to embody those ideals tonight. Thank you very much.
Erin Bruton, 62, Woodstone Drive. Thank you, everybody. I also stand united with other residents of Voorhees for our children to be taught critical thinking, which to me involves considering alternatives to what we understand, evaluating what are, what is the actual evidence, the one set of truth, not seeking alternative truths that match our ideology, but actually looking for what is factual on the ground. I also support the teaching of diversity, equity, and inclusion. In my own professional life, this has been absolutely critical, not just to be welcoming to others, but of course, that's important, but also seeking positions that would counter my, counter my own in order to be able to head off trouble or misunderstanding that I might have in the future, to invite criticism of my own work, or my own narrow understanding of things. That involves seeking specifically people who have different backgrounds than my own age, race, orientation, other types of differences. And I would like that to be reflected in our education system. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your choices, and good night.
Thank you.
Hello, Joseph Pettit-Demange, 219 Homer. I apologize, I'm in between two Zoom meetings, one for the Voorhees Planning Board and this one. I wanted to thank Mr. Redfern as a colleague and as a parent. He's done a great job. He's included everything. The communication has been great, and I feel he, he's done a great job to keep us where we are and moving in the right direction. So I wanted to thank him not only as a colleague, but also as a parent. Thank you very much.
Want to see if, you want to try her again?
Erin Thornton, I'm sure if you hear us, but...
Any other comments?
Hi, Marcy Rosenstein, 26 Downing Lee. I just want to thank you for your service. I've seen the attacks and, you know, her volunteers, and I appreciate you stepping up. Thank you for listening to the candidates and really hearing what they had to say. There's a vocal minority who are standing for many things that I don't think are the values of most of Voorhees. And frankly, we've, a lot of us become too complacent by allowing them to hijack the conversation. The thought of having curriculum guided by parents sounds good, but it's illogical. Our role is to advocate for our children. Yes, absolutely. But to watch them grow into young adults with the confidence of their own beliefs. Public education is for all children, all races, all genders, all religion, all special needs, all sexuality, and that is what Voorhees should have.
Sorry? No, you're fine.
No, you're fine.
Tresh Saka, 9 Pavilion Road here in Voorhees. I wasn't going to speak tonight. I didn't think I was going to need to, but after hearing the agenda and all the discussion about the superintendent search, I got a little nervous that the decision has been finalized. And I just didn't want it to be completely voted on without speaking on behalf of what's happened here. I am a resident of Voorhees, 26 years. Both of my daughters have gone through the school system, graduated Eastern High School, PTA president at Crescent. I'm also a 10-year employee at Signal. So Mr. Redfern stepped in when this district was drowning. He stepped in in a matter of hours. I am getting the very uncertain feeling that this board has their candidate in front of them, and they're not choosing him. And that scares me. As an employee, it scares me. As a parent, it scares me as a resident. We had Mr. Brozel here for 30-plus years to build this district up from what, that's why I moved here. I moved here 26 years ago. And Mr. Redfern worked under Mr. Brozel's administration in every position possible here in the district. So I'm a little nervous that when we went outside of the district for our last candidate, that we kind of saw what happened. I'm a little nervous that we chose Mr. Redfern very quickly as the person to get us out of the trenches. And I just am nervous that we're overlooking something that's right in front of us. So I just wanted to say that. And thank you so much for everything you've done. The staff will be devastated if you're not here.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I was just trying before, it was not working. Okay, thank you. My name is Kara Thornton. My pronouns are she and her. I'm from 307 Rollingwood Drive. I just wanted to say, and I'm hopefully speaking for, I think, most of the community here. I stand united with other residents of Voorhees for our children to be taught critical thinking and to have lifelong compassion for their friends, family, and community. As such, I believe and support the following: public education and well-rounded curriculum to ensure our youth grow up with the ability to think for themselves; DEI, the teaching of truthful history in an age-appropriate way, even when that means explaining hard topics such as slavery and the Holocaust; open access to the books that teach these topics; and SEL. I stand against racism, homophobia, transphobia, anti-Semitism, and the attempted erasure of history through censorship, book banings, and personal vendettas waged against the Board of Education both here and across the country. Knowledge and education are what give people power, not willful or ironically learned ignorance. Turn off Fox News and go read the books you want to ban. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
We can't hear you.
All right, so can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
I guess I didn't have to speak up. I was just talking about a list of book titles that were given to our media specialists to be submitted to the district attorney. I think we're a little confused or concerned about what that details. And I'm afraid to be touched by the word that there is apparently a list of books. And my understanding is some of the books have to do with diversity issues. I'm not sure where this list is going to let it be used for, but I just wanted to mention the board was aware that there are requests for books, titles specifically in libraries to be submitted. Thank you.
Any other comments? Board comments.
I have one, Mrs. Watson. Actually, my list has grown. First, I want to thank all of you who have come out today. We certainly appreciate that there is a good reflection of the community is here today. So we appreciate that. Second, I want to congratulate Dr. Fulk. The board is very lucky to have you, very lucky. And I also want to thank Mr. Redfern. You have stepped in and done a tremendous job. And obviously, the culture that you created was exactly what we needed. So thank you for your commitment. I also want to make an announcement that it is with mixed emotions. I am announcing my resignation from the Board of Education effective tomorrow, January 24th. Happily, my family has decided to move closer to family out of state. However, it was my dedication to and service to this board that made this choice so very difficult. It has been a challenging yet rewarding experience and an honor to serve the community, the staff, and the children of Voorhees Township Public Schools. Although I feel both admiration for and pride in this community, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to challenge some of our community members to do better. Do better by offering more compassion, more civility, a better understanding of who it is we are all here to ultimately service, and that is our students. While the last year, two years has been a challenge for everyone, the behaviors from a small group of our community have made this volunteer role even more difficult and unnecessarily so. Members of this board have been subjected to numerous forms of abuse, including faceless accusations, harassment, and threats from a small but vocal group of people. Nonetheless, I stand here with no doubt in my mind that every one of my colleagues on this board have our students at the heart of their decisions. I wish my colleagues the best. I wish you continued focus on making the decisions that are right for our students, our staff, and our community. It has truly been an honor to serve with you.
When of clarification, you mean February 24th?
When was I leaving?
January.
January.
Time travel hasn't quite caught up.
Correct, February.
First, I wanted to thank Mr. Lanzalata and Dr. Rossi. They were both the wrestling coaches this year, and I'm not sure if you know my youngest child has special needs. And they welcomed him on the wrestling team, and they created an amazing environment for my son. We all talk about equity and inclusion. You should have come and saw what I saw and how they made my son feel like an equal part of the team. And he was included, and he even got to participate and wrestle two matches and win, but at least he felt like an equal member of the team. So I am so appreciative that we have teachers in our school district that really not just talk the talk, but walk the walk. So I am so grateful and so thankful that my son was able to have an excellent opportunity. And they really set an amazing example for the other young men on the team and to really show them what true inclusion really means. And as I mentioned before, I did a end of year party as a thank you to the team, my family, and everybody. So generously participated, Mr. Redfern and this collaborative team showed their support. So I'm truly, truly grateful that my son can have these opportunities and be welcomed as a real equality and inclusion. So I'm so grateful that I live in that area, that we can experience such things. And I'm also grateful for everybody being here in our community, speaking up and showing up and really taking a part in such an important topic, which is our children. So I'm grateful that we have such a huge community.
I just wanted to take the time to thank Rachel for her time and dedication on the board. It has not been easy, two years to say the least. And I echo her sentiments and hope that the community will listen to what she's stating in regards to how hard it is to be up here because it's not easy. So, thank you, Rachel, for your time and dedication.
Thank you.
I have two comments. I can't tell if anyone else is in line, though.
It's yours.
Okay, thank you. So first, I'd like to thank Mrs. Van Aken for her service. It is, as I think that was Ms. Galliano saying, it's not easy to be up there. But I will say, one of the things I have appreciated as Mrs. Watson and Mrs. Van Aken have run our board is transparent communication, which has made sitting on the board much easier. And I think this is my seventh year on the board. Sometimes communication's been better, sometimes it hasn't been. But what you two have done is making a team of being president and vice president seems to really work. And I hope that's something that will continue as we have to now look for a new vice president, assuming at an upcoming board meeting, as well as fill this vacancy. So I wanted to let you know that I really appreciate your service on the board and all of the areas of expertise that you brought to the Board of Ed. I also want to thank the teachers and the nurses. I'm thrilled that we have a board meeting that's not focused solely around COVID, but I also want to acknowledge that it's still out there. And our teachers are still going above and beyond to include students who are quarantined in courses when it fits in terms of remote learning. The nurses are still incorporating all the protocols for making sure kids are staying out when they need to, making sure they can come back when they're safe to do so. And I know that just because our numbers are going down, it doesn't mean that there's zero. There's still a lot of kids who are out for testing and for potential quarantine. So I want all of the teachers and our staff to know that we appreciate all of those efforts. And even though it's quieter now in terms of hearing that publicly, we still appreciate everything that you're doing, and we know it's still happening and going on behind the scenes. So thank you for all of that work.
I'd like to take a moment to thank you, Mrs. Van Aken, for just being lovely to me and answering the questions that I may have had involving me to the board. In addition to the wonderful staff and teachers that we have, I do have to make a shout-out, to a staff member. I didn't catch her name. I didn't even stop to hear her speak, but I observed her as I was waiting to make a left turn out of my neighborhood. And that was the crossing guard. And what she did, I just thought was a beautiful display of affection for the children, not only in my community, but also, I'm sure, the same in the teachers and staff group and other parts of Voorhees. On Valentine's Day, she made sure that she had little goodies for each child that was a walker. Now, even though it took maybe about 10 minutes for me to make that left turn. Nice, I picked it and said, what a great idea, what a great, wonderful thing she was doing. I didn't catch her name. She definitely is over there. I think that's in the Green Ridge neighborhood. I'm not sure what her name is or anything like that. But I just thought that was wonderful that she did that, each and every walker. And I just, I don't know, I just think that that's that type of purpose-driven perspective that one should have in dealing with children and working in education.
So I'm going to make it brief because I don't want to cry. I guess, darn it. I guess five years ago, we embarked on this journey together. And I cannot imagine doing this without you. You have, you bring a calm and a poise and such a bright but honest perspective. You will be so greatly missed, not just as my friend, but as my colleague, as my right-hand person, as my confidante. I quite honestly don't know how I will do it without you. I love you dearly, and you will be so incredibly missed.
Kelly, don't make me cry anymore.
From letting me feel so thoughtful, but I didn't know what I was doing until now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything, anybody else? All right. Onto finance. Can I get a motion to approve all of the items under finance?
Online voting is open. All motions, everyone voted yes on motion. Motion carries.
We will be going back into executive session. Be it resolved pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the public shall be excluded from that portion of the meeting involving a discussion of a matter involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property with public funds, the setting of banking rates, or investment of public funds where it could adversely affect the public's interests if discussion of such matters were disclosed, and personnel. Further resolved that the discussion of such matter in executive session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the board takes formal action. Further resolved that the board may be in executive session for more than 30 minutes, action may be taken upon return to public session. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
I don't have an estimate of how long it will take. Thank you. Thank you again to everyone who is here and to those who would like to stay. Thank you again to everyone who is here and to those who would like to stay. No, I have a motion to return to public session.
Don't move. Second.
Rachel.
Okay, got it. Thanks. Online voting.
Are you going to say the motion?
Oh, sure. A little bit slow. Still waiting for Dr. Levy and Mrs. Van Aken.
Bet you're waiting for me because I don't even have my
Want me to put it in?
Sure.
Motion is unanimous. I'm closing online voting and saving it. Okay, I will read the motion that we, we talked about in executive session. Authorize the board, actually authorize Mrs. Watson to sign the planning board application and any related documents relating to the property at Westrum. So move.
Second.
Mr. Bryce? Mrs. Cessenza?
Yes.
Ms. Galliano?
Yes.
Dr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Schmooze?
Yes.
Mrs. Stupler? Mrs. Van Aken?
Yes.
Mrs. Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.